He was one in a million as an educator, true to Middletown. And Joe will tell you about her personal relationship as a student. I was with her as a colleague. Every time I see Fowler Field and hear about it in the papers, we're so proud of it. And many people come from all over the state and are able to participate at Fowler Field. And it bugs the hell out of me that 90 percent and most of you don't know beans about Ed Fowler. Well, I said not, John, I said 90 percent. You're 10 percent. Got to allow it for John. And not that you should, but I think we lose something, particularly in the Middletown with our extensive history as a school district, that if we don't recognize and honor people by letting the public know a little bit about them. And we have the opportunity to do this with the field the way it's set up. And there you see Fowler Field. This will explain what you have in your packet, the background of Ed to the Middletown School Without going further with this, we were pleased to get the response from past coaches, past athletes, and family to come up with the necessary financing to have this plaque created and eventually to be installed at the beginning of Fowler Field. I could go on and on, but I will not. I know you have a long agenda. But if any of you would like to more detail about Ed, I'd be glad to share it with you. Joe, you want to say a few words?
Thank you. Ed Fowler was a fine gentleman, one of a kind. I started out with him in fourth grade, so I'm 78 now, so you know that's a long time ago. He was always a gentleman. He was always looking for the welfare of the student and for myself. In high school, he was my homeroom teacher for four years. He was my track coach and he was the M-Club advisor. And he encouraged me to go to Cortlandt State Teachers College and laid out the groundwork at Cortlandt State Teachers College back in 1956 when I went up to Cortlandt and took my entrance exams. A little different process back then, but ultimately I was accepted. However, in August, fear of the draft, I enlisted in the Army for two years and figured I'd pick up when I come back, but that wasn't the case. But I talked to his daughter Karen, Karen Walton, and I think Donnie was the builder here at this school. And she's just thrilled that this plaque is going to be put in place and pay tribute to her father. And it's been an enjoyable trip, shall we say, all along the way. It started at Matty's Diners over here on North Street when Sherry and I got talking to what a beautiful complex you provided for the children throughout the state to come here and enjoy a premium athletic field. And we did discuss, you know, we'd like to have his name put on a plaque and put in a place of prominence so everybody who visits this stadium will know who Ed Fowler was and how loved he was by all students and fellow teachers. Thank you.
Thank you, folks. Frank and Joe, if you guys can come out to the middle, we're going to take a picture and we'll show this front so we can get a picture for the website. And just to add to the history, Mr. Sherholtz was my guidance counselor back in the 1980s at the high school. And Tracy's in every...
I'm glad you said that, Ed, because...
And Kevin, we... Mr. Sherholtz, you put us all on a career path, so...
That's right.
He was also my guidance counselor, too. And he was a guy, you actually were the guidance counselor for all the Williams kids, my older sisters, myself, my brother, everybody coming up through, coming up through Middletown.
Wait a minute, Frank, I want to say...
Hold on, Joe wants to say something, too.
For the people who don't know, I tell you, Frank Sherholtz and Joe Myers, they did a tremendous amount of work on this. And Frank, a longtime director of guidance in the Middletown school system, he put many, many kids on the right track. And Joe Myers over there, a Middletown professional firefighter for many years, Excelsors, and I served with Joe, and he did an excellent job in his career. He's a fire investigator. Go ahead, guys.
Thank you, gentlemen. We'll continue on with recognitions announcements and community reports. And as we promised two weeks ago, you're all set, Mr. Crescenzo. You're leading off today.
First of all, I think most important, thank the voting public that passed our budget. As you, if you were watching the process, there was a tremendous amount of work that went into that budget, and every nickel and dime is accounted for, and it's going to go, it's going to be used appropriately. And the, what do you call, the second proposition, the...
Capital Reserve.
The Capital Reserve Fund, which is incredibly important, too, because that will help us do our long-range planning as far as facility improvements and what have you. And today I had the honor of going to the Breakfast of Champions with Mr. Whitaker. And it's one of the nicest events that I attend. There are about 40 or so students that received this recognition, this award. And it's for things that the students do normally over the course of their day that sometimes becomes unnoticed, and they're recognized for it. So it's like good citizenship, showing honesty, integrity, good conduct. And one of the nicest things about it is that the parents come with them, and the parents are just as happy as the students are when they come up. And Mr. Perino gave them a certificate, and they received a keychain with the Middletown logo on it. So excellent job. And I guess that's up from like 20 or so from not too long ago, it's up to over 40 now. Forty students received it. So thank you. Thanks for inviting me.
Thank you, Mr. Crescenzo. Mrs. Blumenau.
I don't have anything this evening.
Pastor Williams.
Well, I want to, I want to do just what Mr. Crescenzo did and congratulate and thank the public for passing of the budget and for those that did come out to vote. Of course, this process this year, although it was not painless, it was not as, it was not as bad as it was my first year on the board. So I want to congratulate the public for coming out and supporting this school district. I said something the last time, is that we don't ask people to cede into, into our need. We ask you to cede into our vision. And this district is certainly filled with great vision, so I'm excited about that. Also, real quick, I want to, I went to, yesterday here at this particular school, Presidential, the fifth grade had their Latin American Day, Latin American Day. And it was a great event where each class took on a different country, and they do that every year. It was exceptionally, exceptionally wonderful for us this year because my son Aaron is in the fifth grade, and we had the opportunity to go and, and to see what his class was doing. They took on Haiti. And this is the fifth grade mastery program. Teacher is Mrs. Silva. And they did such a wonderful job. They did a take on CNN Kids, and each one of the children took a subject and they, they talked about it as if they were doing the news report. And so I want to congratulate, congratulate them for doing such a fine job in making that presentation. I think they presented it three times. Was it three times yesterday? I think they did it three times during the course of... Three times. And so it was a, it was an absolutely wonderful program on yesterday. I didn't get a chance to visit every room. And if you came, you didn't have to leave hungry. They had plenty of food. They had plenty of everything for everybody. But I want to congratulate them on such a great program. And also, finally, finally, I want to say that this is probably perhaps my most favorite time of the entire year. It's my favorite time of the entire year because, because, not because people call me in the middle of meetings, but, but because, because this is the time that we celebrate our students and their accomplishments, and we're preparing for graduation, and we're preparing for, we're watching them receive all of the accolades and seeing all the, all of what they have worked for come to this point. And so I want to congratulate all of the students, all, especially the seniors, who have worked so hard to arrive at this point down through the years. But I do want to take time to also congratulate the teachers and the administration and the staff for everything that they've contributed in ensuring that these students and our students are able to, to come to this point where they're now preparing to step into the next part of their life. And it takes a teacher, we were sitting here and we were just talking just a second ago about Mr. Sherholtz. And I have to say, you know, we're all very found, very fond of Mr. Sherholtz because he was actually one of the guiding forces during my, during my high school tenure here in, in Middletown. And somebody that I can look back on and know that he had my best interests in hand, and it takes that. And so congratulations and, you know, thank you to all of our teachers and all of our staff and all of our principals, everybody that took interest in, took interest in making sure and ensuring that these students have every opportunity. To be a teacher, and I'm done after this, to be a teacher, I said this, is I happen to be involved in two areas that are probably the most or the least respected or the least appreciated. You know, I'm a preacher, a pastor, a preacher. And then to be involved in this, in this arena of education and to see teachers who are so unappreciated for everything that they do. But I want you to know that I appreciate you, and many of us that sit here on the board, we appreciate what you do. We see it day in, day out. So thank you. Congratulations, and have a great evening.
Thank you, Pastor Williams. Mr. Pierre.
Well, I also want to thank the public for coming out and vote and for approving, for supporting the budget. And I also want to, a special thank you for the people that came out and voted for me for a second term on this board. And I also want to thank Mr. Perino, Mrs. Knapp, and Mr. Pastor Williams for supporting me and really helping me get back on this. I really appreciate your help. It was very hard with my work schedule to get out there, and you guys really helped me out. I appreciate that a lot. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pierre. Mrs. Knapp.
I just want to thank everyone who helped the track team participate in the plant sale that we had last week for Mother's Day. We ordered 400 plants, and we only had about eight left over. So that was a good turnout, and the sun was out that day. Of course, Saturday at the track meet, there wasn't any sun, but, so, but we made it. We did good. We switched from fruit salad and pasta salad to soup, so it worked, worked out all right. But just thank you for everybody that helped us through all of those things. Thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. Knapp. Mr. McElroy.
I'd also like to thank the public for supporting the budget and to congratulate the three, two new members and one returning member and wish them well in the upcoming school year.
Thank you, Mr. McElroy. Mr. Bison.
I will echo the comments of fellow board members with regards to both the election and welcome to our two new board members and our third board member who is returning. I, too, was able to attend the fifth grade, and Mrs. Ruiz's class did Puerto Rico, so it was, yes. And it, I think also for those that are involved with children in the class, it also opens our eyes to the new materials and how they're learning to look at a, different countries, different cultures, and be able to share their knowledge with the public or their parents, and because it was open to anyone that really wanted to come. I believe, Mr. Del Maro, the public could have, there were people, I think, that were not parents in that, that were, so I do want to say that. And that's, and Mrs. Knapp, you did a phenomenal job. You kept us hustling there on Friday with those plants, so, and I'm sorry it rained on Saturday.
Yes, you are. Thank you, Mr. Bison. Mr. Perino.
Thank you, President Estrada. I wasn't going to say too much this evening, but because I know Bishop Williams had to get up at four, but then he said a fair amount, so I'm going to be quick, though. So you can... I am going to be quick, okay? First of all, on a serious note, we're not going to be back, obviously, before Memorial Day. So please remember our Memorial Day, it's more than cookouts. Please remember the men and women who have given their lives for this great country of ours. We wouldn't be able to be here tonight. We wouldn't be able to have our cookouts and so on if it wasn't for the sacrifices of these people. The other announcement, I spoke about Kids Bike Day last meeting. Just a reminder, it's going to be this coming Saturday at the Elks Club on Prospect Street from nine to 12. Mr. Crescenzo and Dr. Eastwood spoke about the importance of bicycle helmets. Bicycle helmets will be distributed, and this is for elementary schools, on a first-come, first-served basis. Middletown Police Department K-9 unit has agreed to be there. There'll be raffles for bicycles. There'll be refreshments. Shop Right 211 has contributed. Dan Higby is going to bring a bus up and give a little tour and a lesson on bike safety. So it's going to be a really nice and a beneficial day for our students in the district, our elementary students. Duane, you did a nice job this morning with the Breakfast of Champions. Congratulations again. It gets, as was mentioned, it gets larger every year. Shout out to our Middletown High School NJOTC unit, who was designated as a distinguished unit with academic honors for this 2017, 2018 school year. Also, the Military Ball on May 7th, very well attended and very well done at the Villa Benizia. They did a nice job there. The cadets appeared to be having a good time. You know, in the past week, week and a half, there's been just programs which demonstrated the pursuit of excellence in this district. The Academic Awards Dinner at Kohl's, all the students who are receiving awards, many worth, some worth $100,000, some worth $60,000. Just a great evening. It just shows the quality of our students. The STEM Night, Mr. Conos here, Tor de Force into Technology. Celebration of the Arts, May 12th, tremendous art displays there. Number of us attended. Congratulations to Mrs. De Pasquale, Antoinette De Pasquale, and Dana Herm of the Art Department, Antoinette, of course, of the Music Department. And then that evening, there was also a dance recital and a softball game, correct, Mr. Estrada?
Yes, there was.
So, and we are in the sectionals now. I'm sure Ed's going to talk about that. So very briefly, those are the activities. Let it never be said that the Middletown students are not, are not living up to expectations because there's just so many activities and so many programs which demonstrate that we have a great student body and a great faculty and a great administration here. Thank you. I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Perino. I just have a couple of announcements, too. First, as you reminded me, congratulations both to the girls lacrosse and girls softball teams, both of which have made their section tournaments, which I believe begin sometime next week. So keep an eye out in the newspaper for times when they play and go out and support our midi bears. Thank you for everyone who did show up to vote on the budget as well as Proposition Two. With Proposition Two being essentially, it's a, it's a faith vote. It's a faith vote to make sure that future boards of educations and the administration continue to properly finance the future of our school district. We've all discussed the fact that we have some long-term projects over the next 10 to 15 years with Carter Elementary as well as Twin Towers Middle School. And the vote last night to set up the Capital Reserve Fund hopefully will allow the district to begin to save some money over the next 10 years to realize those improvements, those long-term improvements. A couple of items that Mr. Witt had sent over to the board as far as remind you dates are concerned, the National Junior Honor Society will be having its induction for Monhegan Middle School on Tuesday, May 23rd at 6:30. Twin Towers will have their ceremony on Tuesday, May 30th at 7 o'clock. Carter, with the elementary program of the Honor Society, will be at 2 o'clock on June 9th. Presidential Park at 2:15 on June 16th. Middletown High School will have theirs at 6:30. It says tentatively on June 16th. I guess that was a date that was changed from May 24th, is my understanding. Is that right? Okay. And then Maple Hill at 6 o'clock on June 20th. We have a lot of chorus concerts. Please head on over to our website. They're all listed there. But the ones that are going to happen between now and our next school board meeting, there's one on Thursday, that's the Maple Hill and Carter Combined Orchestra. That'll be at Twin Towers, 7 o'clock. Monday, May 22nd, is the Monhegan Choral at 7 o'clock at Monhegan. Tuesday, the 23rd, Presidential Park's Orchestra will perform at 7 o'clock at Middletown High School. And on Wednesday, May 31st, Monhegan's Band and Orchestra Concert will be at 7 o'clock at Monhegan. And then the Middletown High School Spring Concert, Friday, June 2nd, at 7 o'clock. I believe there's also a talent night on this Friday at the high school, and time is at 7 o'clock as well. So if you want to see some good talent from some of our high school students, head on over there as well. Back quickly to the budget, it passed by 71 percent, so great job for everybody who did get out there and vote. That's probably one of the higher percentages that we've seen in recent years. So thank you for having your faith in, in us, both at the administrative level as well as at the board level on there. And that's all I have at this time. Yes, Mr. Crescenzo?
Forgot to mention that Shop Right supplied the refreshments for the Breakfast of Champions. They had coffee and bagels and fruit and what have you, and they do that every, every event. We appreciate that very much.
Definitely. Great shout out, shout out to them. And I believe also tomorrow is the honor roll lunch. Is that correct, at 1 o'clock?
Ice cream social.
Ice cream social, 1 o'clock?
1:37.
1:30, over at the high school, for board members who'd like to attend as well. So congratulations to all of those who've made the honor roll once again over at the high school. Moving on, we'd like to give our public an opportunity to address the Board of Education. You have four minutes. Mr. Pierre will keep time. Do you have the timer or no? Okay. For anybody, it's our opportunity to listen to the public. We do not dialogue at this time, but administration will answer questions if they have the ability to do that this evening. Would anybody like to address the board? Seeing none, we'll move on. Any letters, Mrs. Clark? No letters. Okay. Now the fun part. At this time, I'll need a motion to approve and accept the May 16, 2017 vote results.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Perino, seconded by Mrs. Blumenau. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 9-0. Congratulations, Middletown. You have yourselves a budget and some new board candidates. Good job. Does anyone have any problems if we do all personnel memorandum items together?
No.
No? Okay, so we'll move, no questions about doing everything together?
No.
So I need approval for Personnel Memorandum 23A Administrative, 23B Instructional, 23C Non-Instructional, and 23D Instructional.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Perino, seconded by Mrs. Knapp. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion, are you okay? Looks a little perplexed out there. Okay. Motion carries 9-0. I need approval of Financial Memorandum Number 24. Moved by Mrs. Knapp, seconded by Mrs. Blumenau. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries 9-0. I need approval for Special Services Memorandum Number 22. Moved by Pastor Williams, seconded by Mrs. Knapp. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries 9-0. I need approval for the Board of Education meeting dates for the 2017, 2018 school year as amended. Again, August 31st, from 6 to 9, will be a scheduled board retreat. And the September 20th meeting, which was a Wednesday, will now be moved to Tuesday, September 19th, in observance of Rosh Hashanah, which happens on the evening of the 20th. I need a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Perino, seconded by Mrs. Knapp. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries 9-0. We do have a personnel announcements, and I skipped over, I was doing so well, too. It's all yours, Mr. Del Maro. I was on a roll, right? You didn't want to stop. It's like a, it's like a train wreck, ready, ready to happen. And I apologize. Flew right by it. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mrs. Estrada, Board of Education, Dr. Eastwood, and Middletown School Community. It's always a pleasure when we appoint people to various staff positions, regardless of the position, as they're all contributing factors to educating our students. But it's an extra pleasure when you have a homegrown individual through an arduous interview process aspire to what I would consider one of the higher-level administrative posts in our school district, and certainly to round off our instructional team administratively at Middletown High School. So it's with a great pleasure to bring to the microphone a familiar face as been part of the school community from kindergarten all the way to this evening and all the time in between that. From eating his bologna sandwiches at elementary school, as he told us during his interview process, all the way to making the Middletown midi football team, the competitive team that it is today, as well as getting all those kids passed through global regencies that we're very pleased over the years. I'm going to ask Mrs. Sorentino and the entire administrative team that's here this evening at the high school to come up to the microphone and support your newest colleague.
Good evening, Dr. Eastwood, President Estrada, Mr. Del Maro, Mr. Tuttle, members of the board. You can't follow that introduction. No way, no how, not even close. Yeah, thanks, Ed. We'll talk about that later. At any rate, it is exciting. It's exciting for Bill to join the team with us. It's exciting for our team to become a unit. I'm very proud of all of them for all the work that they've done to get us here today. Bill has been instrumental in the global studies as well as the humanities crafting that vision for our building. He's been indoctrinated into the OER initiative, and he's been a very strong leader in that movement for our district, which is our future. I congratulate him and welcome him to our team.
Members of the board, President Estrada...
Members of the board, President Estrada, Dr. Eastwood, Mr. Delmore, Mr. Tuttle, administrative team, Tracy. I just want to first start and say thank you. Thank you again. Last we spoke, it was in a different capacity in January, and here we speak. And I'm becoming, I guess officially now have become, starting July 1, the instructional leader. I'm just so thankful, and I don't say it lightly, I loved my close to 15 years in the classroom. It was some of the fondest times I've had professionally, and I always look back on it. But I'm more than excited and very excited to serve the students in this new role, and join the administrative team, and just continue down that road, improving Middletown High School and keeping it great. So, thank you for the opportunity. Thank you for your faith in me, and I'm excited to get going. So, thank you.
And Mr. Donahue and all of you, you know, one of the things that we look at when we are interviewing you guys when you come around is first and foremost, making sure that you have the passion for our district. It's not an easy district to not only teach in, but not an easy district to be an administrator of. So, first and foremost, we look for that passion. You obviously, all of you have it. You go for the extra mile. Please know that we acknowledge that, we realize that, and we appreciate that each and every year. And we look forward to seeing all of you in about a month's time, as we celebrate our next graduating class. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I haven't missed anything else, have I? Okay. We'll move on to Action Item 10E, which is a resolution of intent regarding proposals for the sale and issuance of refunding bonds of the city school district of the city of Middletown, Orange County, New York. I need a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Perrino. Seconded by Mrs. Knapp. Any discussion? Before we get into the roll call vote, Mr. Tuttle, if you can give us a little background on how much the district will be saving with these, with this approval?
Right, so the purpose of the resolution that you have before you is to reissue bonds from 2008. There are bonds that were 15 years for term. And by refinancing over the next six years, we'll save $300,000, roughly $50,000 a year. So, working with our financial advisors, it's a really good opportunity for us to take the lower interest rate.
Great, thank you. Any further discussion? This will be a roll call vote, Mrs. Clark?
Mr. Crescenzo?
Yes.
Mr. Estrada?
Yes.
Mrs. Knapp?
Yes.
Mr. McElroy?
Yes.
Mr. Perrino?
Yes.
Mr. Pierre?
Yes.
Ms. Tobiasin?
Yes.
Pastor Williams?
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero.
I said yea.
I need a resolution for the approving of a settlement agreement with, between the enlarged city school district of Middletown and Pacilio G.C. Court. So moved. Moved by Mr. Perrino, seconded by Mrs. Knapp. Can we have a discussion? Mr. Scott, can you let the public know what this vote is about?
Good evening. Last spring, we started a roofing construction project on the Twin Towers Middle School. During that time, we found that the contractor was not performing in a timely manner, and we had to get open for school. And this was about July, we noticed this. Efforts to get him to speed up the work was not successful, and at that time, we terminated that contractor. Subsequently, we had takeover contractors come in and perform a lot of work to get the building ready to open. Since that time, we have negotiated a settlement with the contractor initially, who was performing slowly to finish the job. So, what you have before you this evening is an agreement to allow them to do that. It also reduces their contract from a figure of $1,699,900 down to $800,000. The delta of that is being used to pay the takeover contractor. We have a reassurance that they will move forward correctly this time. And I also have a schedule, and of course, we still have the bond in place to assure that work will be done.
And we anticipate the work to be completed by July 4th, right?
Approximately July 4th, yep. They will mobilize next week.
Does anyone else have any questions? Thank you, Mr. Scott.
You're welcome.
This will also be a roll call vote. Mrs. Clark?
Mrs. Blumenau? Yes. Mr. Crescenzo?
Yes.
Mr. Estrada?
Yes.
Mrs. Knapp?
Yes.
Mr. McElroy?
Yes.
Mr. Perrino?
Yes.
Ms. Tobiasin?
Yes.
Pastor Williams?
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero. Now, our second opportunity to address the board. I don't see any, so we'll move on. Before we get to the committee reports, just one quick reminder that we have, excuse me, prom coming up next Thursday, a week from Thursday. So, congratulations to all those who will be attending. Please be careful on prom night as well. Now, we'll move on to our...
Where is prom? Is it local?
Yeah, it's at Villa Venezia on Goschen Turnpike. I believe this is the second year that we've had it at that location.
Thank you.
And I believe the way transportation works with the prom this year is that students are required either for a parent to take them, or a limousine, or there is a school bus provided, one of those three options. Students cannot drive themselves. Am I correct?
That's correct.
And that was due to an unfortunate accident that cost the life of one of our students a few years back. Moving on to committee assignments. Audit, Ms. Tobiasin, anything?
No. The meeting date, though, has been changed. It is now Tuesday, June 5th, I believe, at 6 o'clock? At 5 o'clock.
Did I ever give you the card of that other person?
Yes, you did. And I haven't done anything yet.
Not a problem. Buildings and grounds, Pastor Williams. Nothing? Change orders, Mr. McElroy. I think you guys had a meeting today?
Yes, we did have an impromptu meeting before the meeting to discuss upcoming change orders. And, you know, we discussed them, and basically, they're mostly high school-related. There's one for Monhagen, but they were all things that were, you know, needed to complete construction, or, you know, tidy up some loose ends. And as usual, Mr. Scott is on the money in terms of keeping these things on budget or under budget when he can. There was even one where there was a refund.
Oh, okay. We like to hear that.
So, as far as I think, you know, the three of us were concerned, we were good with it. I don't want to speak for Paula and John, but I think we were good.
Great, thank you. I think this would be a great opportunity if either Dr. E. or Tom can give us a brief update on where we stand and where we're going with construction through the end of this year, and what's going to happen this summer, especially, I mean, we've said it every meeting, but I think it's important to make sure that people understand our buildings will be closed during the summer months.
At this time, I would say the high school construction third floor is getting very close to being substantially complete. Floor tiles, ceilings are going in, lighting fixtures. Recently, the glass walls that are on the Innovation Lab and some of the other small instruction classrooms have been put in. The work in the courtyard area, I would say, is probably lagging about a month behind that, because as the finishing trades are done on the third floor, they move down to the lower area. And I'm very confident we'll be ready to open that, you know, for September, as we've planned. The other buildings that will be under construction this summer, there will be interior work at both Maple Hill and Monhagen. Floor tile replacement, carpeting replacements. Maple Hill will have floor tile and carpeting, as well as ceilings, and all the hallways will be replaced. Some of that work has already started, and they're working evenings right now. I would say, I think by the end of this weekend, all four wings at Monhagen, which should be the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade wing, and the tech wing have already been re-tiled, and they will be starting to wax those next week in the evenings. The parking lot at Monhagen will be completely taken out, on the curbs, sidewalks, and paving. William Carter will be getting some new heating units. And Twin Towers will have renovation work in the cafeteria, auditorium, flooring will be replaced in there. The gymnasium, the small gymnasium, will have the flooring replaced, and locker rooms will be renovated. And additionally, new lockers will be put in throughout the entire building for all student use. So, that'll be our summer. Tennis courts are also under construction. I would expect to see the retaining walls and whatnot going up to form the backside of the court structure this, within the next two weeks.
And I think they're building, doing work to the food service building as well?
Food service building, yep. The foundations are in for the new bathrooms there, which will serve both the food service and the softball field. And additionally, at this building, we're putting 50 additional parking spots on the backside of the building, which has also just started this past week.
Great. Does anybody have any questions? Maybe if we can schedule one last board visit before the school year ends, sometime in June.
Yeah, whenever...
So, we'll have the outgoing board take a look at pre-summer, and then when you guys come back in September, you can take a look at what's happening.
Yep, never do you like to do that. We're available to do that, sure.
Great, thank you, Tom.
Okay, you're welcome.
Diversity Committee, anything? Pastor Williams, you kind of mentioned the Latin. Cool. Fair Funding, they didn't do anything this year, so that never worked out. IEP reviews, Mr. Perrino?
Keep going.
Done for the year? You have more.
Keep rolling along.
Town of Wokil, Mrs. Blumenau, anything? Have they, who's the new supervisor? Who's acting? Mr. Valentin is still the acting supervisor? Okay. City of Middletown, Mr. Crescenzo? Orange County School Boards, they'll have their annual dinner. We've all discussed, so far, we have Ms. Tobiasin, Mr. Estrada, Mr. Crescenzo, and I'm missing a fourth. Mrs. Knapp have said they'll be attending, and Mr. Pierre's going to let me know, and Mr. Perrino's going to let me know, right? And Pastor Williams will let me know. New York State School Boards Association, I believe they came out with a placard about ordering rooms and stuff. Am I correct?
A postcard came.
A postcard came. As a matter of fact, let me check.
June something.
Yeah, we can. Yep.
And they said to get it in early.
Yeah, so I'm going to give this to Mrs. Clark. It really didn't say anything about the hotels, but I'm going to give it to you, so that way you can coordinate. My concern here is that you want to order as soon as you can.
Tarzan.
Yep, I know she will be. But, but there's going to be a little lag between the end of this board session and by the time you do reorg in the other one. So, you want to jump on it as soon as the new board sits in. So, I'll give this to you after the meeting.
We can't, I just want to correct things. We can't book those rooms.
Until after the new school.
Until, yeah, so.
Yeah, but as soon as you...
Well, no, there's a date that they get released. The rooms get released.
Oh, June 15?
Yeah. They get released. The rooms won't be released until June 15.
In order to book them.
So, the date that we want to book them is on June 15.
Okay.
Right. Exactly.
Sounds good. So, she's on it. All right, cool. Policy, we need to... Yes?
I just wanted to, like, know, I received this from, from the New York State School Boards.
Well, go read it.
Was that my copy? So, it says, "School Board U, Board Mastery Award." It's me. Which is very nice. Not sure what I did, but I got 250 points. So, that's cool.
It has to do with the NISBA conference.
I know, I'm sure, I know. And then, yeah, and then I got a certificate for a, for a course, to take another course. So, and I recommend to the new school board members to, when things come out, law conference, law conferences are really interesting. I mean, they're, you know, they can be not interesting, but I find them interesting because they're a learning experience, so. And they sent me a gift, which is nice, nice portfolio, so.
Congratulations, Mrs. Blumenau.
I don't know.
So, policy, we need to, I need to speak after this meeting with Ms. Tobiasin, Mrs. Blumenau, and Mr. McElroy. And then we'll set a final to approve the ones that we have. And I believe there's only one section left after that, Section 8,000, right? So, crossing my fingers, we'll get them done before.
Unfortunately, I believe, like, in the next five minutes, so I won't be here, but please reach out to me and just let me know what you decide. I'll be flexible.
Sounds good. So, safety and security, Mr. Perrino, anything?
Keep going along.
And I think, Mr. Pierre, you gave us an update on the Teacher Center last meeting. Okay. Sounds good. So, those are our committee reports. Anything new and compelling? Well, first of all, I promised our newbies that at Roundtable, they'd have an opportunity to address everyone, so we'll start off with Keisha. Need to give her the microphone, Mr. Pierre.
First, I'd just like to say thank you to everyone who came out to vote, to vote for, to pass the budget, and then to make sure that you stuck with the community, and to vote for me as well. I thank everyone that is sitting here, and I thank you for just welcoming me, and I look forward to working hard for the community and working next to you guys. Thank you.
And I'm about to tell you something, that I have not told any of the other board members yet, because I just found out this morning, and Mr. Perrino will correct me if I'm wrong. But I reached out to George Sands, who used to be on the school board back in the 1980s. He was the very first African-American to be voted onto a school board in Middletown. And I confirmed with him, at least from his recollection, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but historically, I believe you are the very first African-American female to sit on the Middletown City School District Board. So, congratulations.
I think Lynn Moore.
Huh? Lynn Moore. Lynn Moore? So, John reminds me of somebody. Do you remember what years?
Yeah, that's right. Oh, yeah. In the 90s, like...
Regardless, you deserve the applause. Lynn Moore.
Yes, yes, you're right.
2,000.
Okay. So, my apologies to Lynn Moore. You were the first, but number two's not too bad, so congratulations on breaking some barriers here at Middletown. Thank you. And Mr. Gomez. He'll be taking over for me as the lone Hispanic on the school board.
Those are the very big shoes to fill, I hope, to prove worthy of it. And first, let me, as one of the new incoming members, I want to express my heartfelt appreciation to both to Edwin Estrada and to Darryl McElroy for their outstanding service to our community, to our children. I think it's important that we acknowledge that those that came before us and the wonderful legacy they've left us of a school district that's caring, kind, and committed to academic excellence for all our children. And let's never forget their endeavors, and we hope they continue to be part of the Middletown community. And then, along the same line, I want to take this opportunity to thank all the wonderful members of the Town of Wokil, City of Middletown, the community, for their support and trusting me with the opportunity to serve on the school board. One of the things I enjoy the most was, or what I enjoy the most was going out with my children, whether it was collecting signatures, distributing palm cards, putting out signs, or going to different community events. Because at the end of the day, it's all about the children. That's where it begins, that's where it ends. It's like the words prescribed in the Constitution's preamble, "To preserve the blessings of liberty for ourselves and our posterity." And when you think of all the things that this current board has accomplished, or what's been accomplished under the leadership of Dr. Eastwood, the blended learning, the college, the opportunity to engage in college courses through the partnership with Syracuse University, the Chromebook distribution, and so many more activities, we are, truly could be said that our school board, together in partnership with our wonderful teachers, parents, and our local community leaders, have been building a wonderful bridge for our children's future.[1775.63] And I'm very humbled and blessed for the opportunity now to be, to joining such a distinguished team of builders, to continue to make that bridge stronger and more solid to the future. And with those, I want to especially thank the board members. Mr. Perino, Bishop Williams, and I think I have to mention all the board members. Mr. Cresenzo, Mr. Tobiasin, for their wonderful support, encouragement to take on this endeavor. With your thoughts and prayers, I hope to make a difference along with my colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gomez. Thank you, Mrs. Evans. Thank you to both of you. I'm sure you do fantastic, and hopefully, the next board will assign each of you a mentor that can help you through the process as you move along. Pastor Williams?
Nothing really. I'm the only lone male sitting at the table tonight that doesn't have a tie on. But, well, well, you know, you have a, you have a great, great-looking sports jacket, though. That's like the bomb sports jacket. It is. I love it. I do. Well, no, they're not. They're black. They're black. They're polka dots. But I did, I didn't put on, I wear suit and ties and clergy collars all the time, so I wanted to, I wanted to just kind of be comfortable tonight. But I did put on my, I did put on my gift that we received during School Board Appreciation Month, my official Board of Education member shirt. So I am in uniform tonight, but I wanted to, I wanted to acknowledge that. We look good. I have to be honest, when they first gave me the shirt, it said John on it, but the shirt was so small, I thought it was my 10-year-old shirt. Then we realized that it belonged to John Perino. But that's all. We've had, we've had, we've had a great, a great year, and so, thank you.
Speaking about the election, I have to compliment our district clerk.
Yeah, that's right.
Karen Clark, first board election. Did an excellent job, and the more I work with Karen, the more impressed I am with her skills.
It was flawless. Did you get anybody in Spanish calling you? No? Okay. Wait till you get that. Mrs. Blumenau?
I just want to echo the appreciation and thanks to our great community for support of the good work that's being done in our district. And thank you to those who have stepped up to be a part of this board, because we do, we do important work, and we, we take it very seriously. And so, thank you to both of you, and also to Lou for continuing on the board. Of course, I wish, well, they're not gone yet, so they're a little lame, but they're not gone yet. So we'll, I'll hold my comments.
I'm a lame duck.
To like, the first of June. All right, but congratulations to both of you, to all of you, and look forward to working with you.
Thank you, Mrs. Blumenau. Mr. Cresenzo?
I guess echoing what was previously said, realizing that it was a five, six-month process to build that budget, and the ups and downs, and the worry and concerns about money coming in and what have you. And it came out, and it's a perfect budget for what we could do, and we appreciate the support from the community. To us, that means that you understand what we're doing, and you are, you know, supporting us 100%. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cresenzo. Mr. Pierre? Mrs. Knapp? Mr. McElroy? Mr. Tobiasin?
Good night.
Mr. Perino?
No, the only thing this yearbook is making its way around, the 2017 yearbooks, it's just excellent. And the person who coordinates the yearbook is Lori Worth at the high school. She's been doing this for a lot of years now, and she does really a tremendous job. I don't know how she does it, but it gets, seems to get better and better every year, possible. But it's just a, just a wonderful publication.
She puts a lot of work into that.
She really does.
And she really goes out and makes sure she gets as much information as possible. I'm just trying to find the date for our next school board meeting here. Here it is. Yeah, you're right. So, the only thing, I did have one item, but I forgot what it is, so we will entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved by Mr. Tobiasin, seconded by Mr. Perino. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries nine zero. Our next meeting will be on Thursday, June 1st. Have a very safe Memorial Day weekend, and a very safe prom for all of our high school students. Have a good evening.